Sleep time.
I don't either. I don't know what's going on. We didn't get started. We always start our meeting to with a moment of silence. Please join me as we do that. Thank you. Here she is. Okay, place the leakers to the flag.
I'll place the leakers.
To the flag of the United States of America and be the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, C is adopt the agenda. We will take motion to adopt the agenda if there are any changes to be presented or some change.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Corey makes a motion, second, uh, second, heard. Questions or discussion on favor? All were in favor. Uh, two is updating Sherman Carter Barhart, uh, architects.
But they could be with us today. They've shared some information. I'm just going to walk you through the three projects that are currently underway. Garett County Middle School exterior door replacement. Uh, at this point, uh, no work has been completed directly on that, but the schedules have been approved. Shop drawings have been, the review of them have been completed. And this metal has been returned to the contractor for the door and the hardware. Uh, they anticipated work for the next 30 days is the mobilization and beginning of the door replacements on December the 14th. Currently, uh, from Sherman Carter Barhart, we're hearing the substantial completion is still December 30th, final completion January 29th.
Other questions to that project? That is the doors and the locks.
The doors and locks on the exterior, yeah. We believe we'll have some information to share with you on the interior, uh, but we don't have that today. We've made a request. We have some, uh, some funds that were made available to us, uh, just under $70,000. And, uh, it has to be used for security purposes. Uh, we would like to do the interior doors of GMS. And we have soft permission from KTE to add that to the existing BG1, which saves us some cost with our architects because it's already existing and all we'll have to do is update it. So they give us a temporary, a tentative thumbs up on that, but we don't have a new BG1 yet. So once that happens, it'll be an update. We'll bring that too.
That's, that's the doors, uh, two big doors that separate.
It's all the interior doors, classroom doors.
Oh, okay. The hall doors, not just the hall doors.
No, it's all doors.
Yeah, they, I think you may hit some problems with those hallway doors. Sometimes they'd be popped open, couldn't they? If you hit one up the middle.
We should be okay if we get this approved.
Thank you.
The middle school intercom replacement, again, uh, at this point, there's been no work officially executed, although the review process has begun and the schedules have been, uh, completed. At the next 30 days, the anticipation is that on December the 7th, they'll begin the pre-wiring of the new intercom system. They actually anticipate being able to complete the work in two weeks. It'll all be done during second, uh, shift. So it doesn't impact instruction if we have kids in the building at the time. And their substantial completion is December 30th as well, final completion, January 29th.
Uh, any questions on the intercoms?
All right. Camp Dick Robinson Elementary Bus Canopy Edition, about nine percent complete at this point. Uh, they have done site mobilization, fencing and site demolition of the existing sidewalks. And, uh, they have everything else in place. Uh, there is a progress meeting scheduled for November the 16th, which is today. I haven't heard from them about that yet. The next 30 days, it's the storm drainage installation, layout and placement of canopy footings. And the canopy will begin going in. They currently, again, have the same substantial completion date in December 30th, final completion, January 29th. So it's a change, but that's where it is right now.
Questions? Thank you. Okay, we'll go to number three is Garett up, update.
So I'd like to share with you as the Garett folks come in, uh, to, uh, share some information with you, this following proclamation. Whereas when schools and families work together to support students, the entire community is strengthened. And whereas when families help students set high expectations, talk with them about school and future, students are more likely to succeed. And whereas when schools build strong relationships with families and link family engagement activities to learning, families are better prepared to support their children's education. And whereas when these things happen, students take courses that are more challenging, set and reach lofty goals, attend school more regularly, graduate and pursue post-secondary education. Here at Garett County Schools, we are committed to partnering with families to support students. And that's why we want to uplift the importance of family engagement throughout the week of November 16th through 20th and the entire year. Now therefore, in collaboration with partners for education at Maria College, Garett County Schools declares November 16th through 20th as Family Engagement Week. And we have the folks from Garett with us today. Sarah Davis, Shelley Pocket, Jessica Woods, and Brandon McMullen are going to share with you the information about the work that's going on in Garett County through Garett right now.
Hi, thank you all so much for having us tonight. I will try to keep this as brief as possible, but I just wanted to be awesome. Based on what we do as a organization, I want to start by reading our mission statement. And this is a mission statement that was created as, um, the Garett County group. Uh, our mission is to help create well-rounded individuals that will be contributing members of society. We promote not only high achievement academically, but also meeting the social and emotional needs of our students. We want every student in our cohort to graduate college and career ready. So that is our mission, uh, for what we come into work every day for. Uh, I'm an academic interventionist. Uh, I work with math and the middle school and the high school in the eighth and grade, eighth and ninth grade, which is our cohort right now. Um, with the trying times that we all know it's, we're having right now with, uh, COVID, um, it's become very challenging. So instead of just choosing a small group, um, we have made the entire eighth and ninth grade our group. So, uh, students are, students are behind, or maybe, should I stop?
You go right ahead.
Okay. Uh, when students are behind academically, we pull them from their normal classes, um, if we're able, and pull them into small groups and work on them with them one-on-one, um, and in whatever way we need. It's not always academics that these kids need. Sometimes it is social and emotional needs that they need. They just need somebody to talk to. It's, it's difficult times. Um, so we really work hard in building relationships with not only the students, but the parents or the guardians of the students so that we can build that relationship that'll last all the way until they graduate. Because we will follow this group of students until they graduate. So, uh, that's a little bit about me and what I do.
Good afternoon. I'm Sarah Davis, for those of you who don't know me, and I'm Shelley. Uh, I am the English instructional assistant. I'm still getting used to this.
Academic interventionist.
Academic interventionist. I'm new to the position. I've been with Garett County for eight years now, and I just love the kids here. Um, a little bit about what I've been able to do, uh, working through the virtual world right now. Um, it's been really helpful to have the interactions with the kids via Google Meet. Uh, and when the teachers maybe struggling to reach out to some of those cases who are not answering, and I'm able to make contact with them, maybe one-on-one, and say, hey, come on, go with me, and we'll just do it one-on-one. And, um, I've had a lot of successes there, um, with individual students. Um, and it's, uh, it's kind of a blessing to be able to offer this to our students right now. Uh, because there are so many needs, as Shelley was, was mentioning, uh, not just academics, but I think more importantly, just emotional, having that person come into, into the computer that they know is our advocate and is wanting to be sitting with them for the future, uh, through high school. I really appreciate the opportunity. This is Jessica Woods.
Hi, uh, she said, I'm Jessica Woods. I'm a CCN at Garett County High School. And, um, I've been sharing with kids, uh, virtual college visits since that's the route we're having to take now, and trying to share with them, um, fast pay information and, uh, graduation requirements through that route. And also social and emotional, I can hear, social, emotional information through Google Classroom on making good choices, positive choices, and, um, a lot of things on, um, how to develop good character and character education using programs that Garett has given us through ERFI with, um, character development, um, drug prevention and things like that. And then since we've been having them in person, I've been really enjoying getting, meeting them and doing mentoring programs. And I'm hoping that will carry over and now that I've got a meeting with person, it'll be easier to get in touch with them and carry that virtual as well, to be that one person that they can count on, that will be there for them to reach out and keep check on their grades, keep check on their attendance, and if they can reach out to their struggling in a class and then know that I can help them get the assistance they need, whether it be tutoring with these girls or reach out with their teacher and work with their teacher to get them the help they need. And then hopefully when all of this decides, gets decent phone stuff taken to the college campuses that I've been showing them virtually and.
I am Brandon McMullen. I am the CCN at Garett Middle School, working with the eighth grade students. Uh, this is my first year on the job. And, uh, when I first entered this job, it was very interesting to me because when I think of working in a school building, I think everybody has to focus on their academics, on the academics of the students. And the way that I try to, uh, try to tackle my job is I'm support outside of the classroom. We have so many staff at Garett Middle that focus on the academics. I let them handle their job. I want to help these students out outside of the classroom. I want to make sure that they have everything that they need emotionally, socially. I want to help them prepare for the world instead of helping them out with math. If they come to me and they say, I need help with math, I say, I'll get in contact with Ms. Pocket for you. I know where to find her. She sits across the room from me. I want to help these students look forward to college, try and help them decide what they want to do, where they want to go. I'll say that when I was in school, I didn't really have that. Come my senior year of high school. All of a sudden now I'm looking for colleges. I'm trying to decide what I want to do. I'll tell you, I have a degree in accounting. I'm not an accountant. I'm here. I don't want students to go to college and to feel like they've wasted time, money, years of their life. I want to help them through that. And I think that we do a good job of doing that. I can't wait until COVID is over so that we don't have to flip back and forth between virtual and a person. I want to take them on these college visits, show them what a college atmosphere is like. I want to take them to career opportunities. I want to take them to Toyota. I want to take them. The, the only career field trip that I ever took was to, uh, to a mattress factory. That was the most important field trip that I'd ever taken. I want to be able to offer that to these students. Um, and I look forward to doing that. We're trying our hardest, like Jessica said, to do that right now, um, as best as we can. Thank you, guys.
Okay, so a little introduction, everybody. I just want to tell you all what family engagement is, which is what this week is promoting. Um, because of the circumstances, we actually had to make bags to send home with the students. So we made about 60 bags to send home STEM activities that the students are to do with their families. Uh, one of them was as simple as Rice Krispie treats. So the students will make Rice Krispie treats with their families, but they have to do the activities because we have to add math. So, it's an icon. So they will actually use aluminum foil and create boats that can float. And then all the instructions, they have all the materials, they have everything that they can, they have, they need to do all of the STEM activities that we gave them, college information, how to fill out your fast fees or what PEE's money is, uh, all the important things that kids need to start thinking about now. Uh, we don't focus just on college, but career as well. So we need those people out there that want to build things and, you know, want to use their hands in order to take jobs. So, um, that's what this week really focuses on. It's getting the families involved and having them sit down and have family time. And I think that during COVID is probably one of the greatest things that has happened out of this is that we do have that family time. We have that together time. We all sit down together and we talk and that kind of thing. So we really wanted to send home things that the kids will be able to do with their families. So as a, as a group, we came up with ideas that we could use to send home with the children and actually have them work with their hands and, and spend some time in the kitchen and those kind of things. So that's what we wanted this Family Engagement Week to be about, and we wanted to share that with you all.
Thank you.
So thank you all so much for having us.
I have a question too.
Yes.
Everybody else. How many kids or, or students are we serving in middle and high school?
Well, we have about 400 total in middle school and high school. So we only focus right now, we follow the eighth and ninth grade currently. We follow them all the way until they graduate. So we have about 400, give or take a few. Typically, we can't focus on, uh, we don't usually spend resources on students that receive other federal money. But of course, during this time, we're not, we're not discriminating against anything or anybody. We bring them all in and we work with everybody equally right now. I think that's really important.
These 400 met a criteria to be in this program.
No, you just have to be an eighth grader or a ninth grader to be considered in our cohort. Typically, we would actually pull a certain percentage of kids. We usually try to work on novice reduction. So that is what we typically try to do, but right now we just need kids to pass. Um, I'm, I'm just being completely honest. We need kids to actually feel success in something. So. So typically, we would only have about 40 to 50 kids that are normally in our caseloads. But again, we can't really have a caseload right now. For one, we don't have any data to base it on. Um, so it's kind of hard for us to choose just a certain group of kids.
So, so when we have to go virtual, do you?
We do everything virtually as well. Now, we do, we still take Wednesdays. And, um, when, this week Wednesday, we have seven kids that are actually getting transportation from school, um, or from home to school, and we will work with them one-on-one. So as long as we keep our small groups under 10, then we can still work with students one-on-one. Uh, the other days, we actually do everything virtually. So we have, uh, Google meets or Google hangouts or anything else Google that we can actually interact with the students online. So we do, we do it that way.
So that's worked into their daily schedule with their classroom work?
Yes. Well, usually we can actually ask the teachers, um, hey, the students are really struggling. And typically, if they're, you know, a, a unit behind, it's not going to do any good trying to build information on what they don't know. So the teachers are very accommodating for us to pull that child from that particular class and work with them, try to get them caught up so that when they meet with them the next time, then they're actually where they need to be. So.
Earlier, I asked you about Dreamer, and she's the writer of the partners.
Yes. It took me a minute to figure who you're talking about, yeah.
And I, I made the assumption that you, that she or her people were supervised or.
That we do.
Coming out.
Yes. Uh, well, we actually have one virtual. Um, Rebecca Ossix is actually the, uh, academic intervention coordinator for our area.
Yeah, I saw her. She's on.
Uh-huh. And she's on there right now. So, um, if you all have any questions as far as above my head, then she has access to be able to speak to you all or anything like that. So.
Well, I was just making that connection there. It's just Maria. But that's my alma mater.
Oh, okay.
It's, I'm a member of the county as too. So we're very, very interested in Maria and what Maria does to our surrounding area here. And Garett is always, we've all have always been bragging about Garett.
Yes, Garett's been great. It's my second year here.
What she does and serving that college and kids.
Yes, sir.
So we're very, very fortunate to have that in our schools.
Yes. We, uh, we enjoy it. I enjoy it, that one-on-one. I was a classroom teacher in math and science for years. And so this is my opportunity to help struggleers and that's my, this is what I focus on. I love it. So. Any other questions? No?
Appreciate you all.
Thank you.
We appreciate you all.
Can I insert a quick Mr. Wilson? And I like it. If everybody's up there, I'd like to take a picture with Garett.
to take a picture with Garrett folks with the board. Uh, if y'all.
Do we need a mask on?
I guess we should. We need to take a picture, yes. You know, one of the things I'll add before that, and we appreciate Ms. Ossiks uh, kind of logging in tonight and joining us. Man, we love Maria College, we love Garrett. I mean, what an opportunity uh, that Maria and Garrett provides for Garrett County. Uh, and especially, you know, we've got some unbelievable staff here. Um, I think it's very unique, our two academic interventionists. You know, when we uh, was fortunate to get this grant, this board decided for those to be certified teachers. Uh, and uh, you know, we've got a veteran math teacher and a veteran English teacher. So not only do we have the teachers, uh, you know, providing intervention for math and re, I mean, for math and English, but man, we have veteran master teachers providing those opportunities for our kids, and we're very blessed for that. We have two foster navigators that, that have a history of working in Family Resource Center, have a history working in athletics. So they have shown a significant, uh, you know, interest in really helping kids out. And without a doubt, this one time with COVID and all the things that are going on, the work that these folks are doing for not only enhance uh, the educational experience for the students, but to remove those barriers, provide those safety nets. I mean, it's a true blessing uh, to have this work with Maria, Garrett, and Garrett folks. We sure do appreciate it. So if y'all don't mind me, if we can take a picture with the.
Can we just stand up?
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be great.
We can just go behind you all if you want. I don't like reading all that down now. I'm Elton Brown's daughter-in-law. So that's why I'm telling y'all. I'm Tony's wife. The best, she goes.
Your eyes will shut.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you all.
Thank you. You all, thanks, Stacey.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Stone. Go ahead and just take off.
Okay. So we'll walk through the agenda for Thursday night. Um, and with your all's permission, uh, I'll skip down a little bit and I'll just go over the things that we know are going to happen. Um, just wanted to make sure that everyone is aware that on the SBDM minutes, that you should see one there from each school. And we've asked the principals to make sure that we have that on a monthly basis so we won't be in a spot where Mr. McCreary pointed out to us last week, there were some, I mean, last month, there were some missing ones. So we've thought those up so you'll have that each time of you have access to the new hires and resignations. Also, for last meeting, uh, Mr. Woods mentioned, uh, ask a question about dual credit at the high school. So I posted uh, a link for you to see what that is, and we'll go over that on Thursday night if you choose to. Uh, we can go as detailed about that as you would want. Where I'd like to start tonight, if we could, is the reports, the treasurer's report, Stacy Woods, tonight. So Stacy, if you'd like to share any information that you have for the board.
Our total ending cash balance for October 31st is five million, one ninety-nine, five ninety-five. So when we compare that number to October 2019, you'll see in total, we're at about two hundred and eighteen thousand. If you look down further, when we compare fund by fund, um, I'll discover some of those differences with you. Uh, your general fund is down by about a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. And this is mainly due to the timing of payroll. October 2020 had three payrolls, whereas October 2019 only had two. So basically how that happened, our district pays on the first and the fifteenth, but if either of those days falls on a holiday or a weekend, we both fit back to the next previous workday. So our November first fell on a Sunday, so we actually paid that on October the thirtieth. So that's how you ended up with three this time. Um, our special revenue fund is down about a hundred and ninety-five thousand. So the extra payroll date has also been contributed to that difference. And we also have additional COVID expenditures this year that we didn't have last year, that we set aside for either FEMA repairs funding. So we've got a lot of additional expenditures compared to last year. Um, our student activity fund, um, as we've discussed before, was not presented in 2019. There was a new GASP standard that started requiring that, so you're going to see that from here going forward. Our construction fund is at about three hundred and ninety thousand, and this is due to current ongoing construction projects. Your food service fund is down by about ninety-three thousand. There are several factors that attribute to this. You've got your extra payroll that affects your food service, um, due to the three payrolls in October. We had our increased costs due to the renovations at TMS this summer, and then we also have reduced sales and reimbursements due to COVID. So then your other funds, your district activity, capital outlay, building fund, debt service fund, community education, and your trust fund, there's minimal activity in those. So, do you have any questions? Okay, ready for anything?
Let me ask just one question that popped in my mind. You said new legislation. What bill, what, you know, what statute?
It was a GASP, um.
I guess that part, we don't know what bill.
I can look it up. I'm almost like eighty-four, but I don't want to go over that.
Someone, I just want to find the history of the, where it's gone, what there's much to do with it.
Yes, GASP eighty-four.
Eighty-four, yeah, thank you.
And when, when are you expecting to receive the first tax collection?
We have received the first tax collection. It will be hosted in November. It was um, about four million dollars, the first one and a half goes to your building fund, and then it's with the positive two and a half renewed. So I just say that nice increase next month.
Very nice little present.
It was.
How does that compare to, say, last year at this time?
It varies then more.
I'm sorry?
It varies then more.
Or, uh, I think I remember at the last board meeting, Mr. Bush was talking about the Read to Achieve Grant and Fund Two. We're not going to have that grant renewed for the next academic year, is that?
So we've got some good news?
Okay, well, that's what I wondered, because I was trying to figure out, that's been a substantial part of what we do in our district, and without it, how are we going to compensate for that? So could you?
So, so the Department of Education has extended it for a year.
For one year?
Yes. So as of right now, we still have her for one additional year. So we were ecstatic about hearing that, yes, ma'am.
I think uh, moving forward, it would be a good idea to anticipate and maybe plan for how we're gonna, how we're gonna fill in the gaps for that.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, other questions? All right, thank you.
Under the consent agenda, you'll uh, review the minutes from last month, and we printed those for you. You have those on your table today. You can text us when you review them. Um, and then you'll approve the treasurer's report as well. That takes us then to the action items.
Let me guess, stuck you right there. Um, I would, Thursday night, I'd like to hear about R O T C, since, you know, you and I talked about that this week. R O T C?
So I mentioned to you, I have something for you next month. Do you want?
Next month, okay. Uh, we were on the phone, and I did hear that next month. And the health problem as well.
We've got, uh, I've, I've put together the list that you gave us, and we're working to put that report, those reports together for you.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead.
So uh, action items, I will ask you to approve surplusing our previous phone bill. Um, phone bill. Let me get to it. Uh, our previous phone system. Uh, and when you do so, uh, I've provided you the information, roughly three hundred and twelve phones, uh, a core system, five systems that were at, at each of the buildings. And uh, our, our hope is to be able to either sell it to the auction or sell via, and that money then will be returned to the general fund. Uh, I've quoted the KRS for you there so that you see that the process that we have to follow, make sure that we do that correctly. We can't do any of that until you guys surplus this equipment, and that's what we need to do. We no longer need that equipment with the new system that you purchased. Uh, we have everything that we need without it.
Are you leaning toward this? That's what you were saying.
Yeah, so Chris is doing some work for us on that to see if there are other options that might exist with other districts that might be using this existing system, see if that's available to us. But through his CIO group, we'll be able to come up with some options, for sure. IB will ask you to approve the BG four from Garrett Middle School roof replacement. And I'm going to go ahead and loop in C, which is BG five from the Lancaster building roof replacement. All that work has been completed. We just need to approve those BGs. Uh, Stacy was able to inform us that uh, once those are approved, we should have roughly two hundred thousand dollars that will come back from those two projects combined, uh, which will give you some uh, good funds coming back and that we thought you wouldn't have. So that's a, some really good news for us there. We'll ask you to approve the two thousand twenty-one CATS offer of assistance. When we have this offer, we have to match that amount. Uh, and Stacy and Chris have worked together to budget that prior to the year, so it's no, um, no big issue for us. We're prepared to do that. Uh, this first offer is in the amount of sixteen thousand nine hundred and twenty-two dollars. So we'll have that, we'll do the match, and hopefully you're willing to accept that money. We'll ask you to approve the facilities planning committee, uh, that we have been working on. And if you remember the last meeting, uh, we uh, decided that we needed to advertise. We had three individuals who either directly submitted their name or had their names submitted, and we confirmed with those individuals their willingness. So there were only three, and we only needed three slots. So uh, you have the full list in front of you. You can see who that is. We'll ask you to approve that on Thursday. With the loss of Mr. Chinowitz, uh, and his decision to retire, we need to find a replacement for you all as a board attorney. So we created a request for proposal, an RFP. Uh, you're welcome to review that. We used some guidance from a neighboring district to ask how they had gone through this process. We'd like to advertise that. You'd see that we would open it on the tenth of December, which gives us an opportunity to come up with a solution for you in January. We'll need you to approve the child nutrition procurement plan. Uh, this was put together by our food service staff, Wendy leading, I mean, Wendy leading that charge for us. Um, it has been reviewed by KDE. Uh, it doesn't require anything uh, from us now, other than your all's approval to use this as the system for purchasing of food service and equipment and services and uh, foods. So again, with the approval of KDE, I feel like that's a pretty easy move for us. We do have a pay application for the CDR canopy. Uh, as you'll remember, I mentioned a few minutes ago that we had about a nine percent completion on that project. That's the only one. Uh, we have it in place, and we'll ask you to approve that. It'll be an amount of twenty-five thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars.
And what was that figure?
Twenty-five thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. We will be asking you to approve a swim team at Garrett County High School. Uh, we believe that uh, we've done as much research as we can, and even though there's been a swim team, we're not sure that it was ever officially sanctioned by the board, and we want to make sure that that happens so that they're entitled and everything that they should be entitled to. It's not a financial issue for you uh, this year. If they want to add something to that, that's something they could make the request for in the spring, but what we're asking you to do is approve that. We do have an official coach who has twenty years of coaching experience and meets all the KHSA certification requirements.
I was thinking about that after we, we talked. Remember, we started that swim team uh, years ago, same time that Title IX was had to be implemented. Um, and I know that they paid a stipend for a swim coach at that time, but don't know whether the minutes were necessarily approved or not.
Right, so what we were doing here was because of the lap, the lapse in the team, we'd want to make sure that we reinstated and put it back in position.
Yeah, I think, I think we did approve it in two thousand.
I think there was one back then.
Two thousand.
But we can't see anything in the most recent uptick where there was a huge gap in between the serving, uh, back then and now. We want to make sure that there's no question. We'll ask you to approve a contract between Huddle and Garrett County High School for online services for athletics. They currently utilize Huddle, uh, but this will be an expansion of that. It will also lead to a mounting of a camera in the uh, Garrett Middle School gym that can be used to broadcast games this year. Uh, hopefully we have basketball games this year, uh, but we know that if we do, there's going to be substantial reduction in the number of people who can enter. Right now, KHSA is saying fifteen percent. Uh, and so we want to make available some options for our community. We'd like to participate in that. Again, this is not funding that you need to add anything to. It's a decision by the high school and the athletic department there to take care of the funding of it using their existing uh, dollars.
Mr. Stone, can I ask a question about that? Um, will this facilitate scouts, I, I think I'm using the right word, scouts, the college scouts that are looking for players to recruit? Will this enable them to watch our students play?
Yes, I, I think you'd find that it will.
Yes.
And they've already used this, I'm sure, for game uh, breakdown and for developing films for kids, but this is going to expand into other teams that we haven't utilized, that haven't utilized this previously. That's why it's being expanded.
I'm trying to remember, did you tell me, when I met with you, that it would just be the video but not no sound?
So with a TV that's been, I mean, the camera that's being mounted, yes. Right now, what we're going to do is use that. Somewhere in the future, we may be able to do some other things beyond that, but this is not a sound-driven piece. It's going to just be a video.
And the only question I had, Mr. Stone, was that to the students being programmed and make sure that's?
They will have to assign dollars. And we'll have to take them. Yep. And then your final item is a review of potential use by the city parks and rec league this year. And I'm sure that there's a conversation we had around that. If you all want to have that conversation tonight, we can, if you want to have it on Thursday, that's fine too. Uh, what I would tell you to take into consideration as you're thinking about it is the limitations that we're going to be placing on our own teams, uh, the amount of space that's not available now. Uh, the Lancaster and Paint Lick substantially could house fifteen or sixteen individuals, and that would have to include players, uh, the coaches, the officials, and any other individuals who were there and were part of the game. So it is very limited space. The only other space that's available is here, and I don't, I, I meant that, present that number to you today. I don't have it in front of me, uh, what the, the numbers here is pretty low.
Four twenty, but it's, but that's fifteen percent of four twenty.
And then it's fifteen percent of that. So if you take the four twenty, you're looking at what, sixty?
Sixty-three.
Yeah, sixty-three. So that's where our current status is. But we have to be, we'll have to make a, a decision about whether we want to allow use of that or not. And that use needs to take into consideration how you're going to insure, claiming the stuff behind it, all of those types of things, since we're in this particular environment of COVID that we're in.
Speaking of insurance, that will be, we'd be protected for.
We would have to have an agreement that was drawn up between us and them.
That's, that's something I thought, my, my problem comes out already being approached by the person about that. And I thought, I thought. And I thought, generally speaking, the same rules would apply to our facilities.
I don't see how we would do that.
Yeah, I think it's only reasonable, you know, if we had to do it, I think they need to too, to do that.
We have a board policy on facilities usage.
It's attached to this document. It says this.
And we will have to waive some of that policy here to approve. I don't know how the board feels about relating cost to this, to the little league. The, with a separate identity from our school, our insurance won't cover this, I don't think.
That's what, that's what I was.
My personally thoughts, now you, we need to investigate with that a little bit.
What's it going to be?
There's, there's what your policy says right now.
So insurance. So this policy says that we must require insurance from the little league or from the city. But who is in charge of the little league? The city or the county? City. So if we are looking at making changes to our policy, we'll have to make sure, you know, if we're going to abide by this policy, those things are going to crop up with the little league program.
Talking to the mayor somewhat about this, you know, he's always been, whatever we do, they will do. He's always been very cooperative like that. And at the same point, he may be somebody we need to contact with, and what are you willing to do? How far are you willing to go to protect all interests?
Well, the key thing to this, as I read this policy, is, like Mr. Stone said, cleaning up the damage that may happen, a light burst, you know. All that will be followed back onto the little league organization. And then the insurance was the other thing, I think, we talked about, Mr. Stone. I don't know if there was anything else. Whether, you know, would they have enough insurance coverage for this program?
We can reach out and find out.
So find out. And what, Mr. Buckman?
Well, I was just going to say, I think that, for me, that the question is the COVID guidelines, and he was going to be responsible for that. And we can't even allow our own, our own athletics programs to use the facilities the way they want to. So to open it up to bring community members in, that, I don't know, I'm just a little uncomfortable with that right now. And the COVID restrictions, the COVID restrictions make it very difficult right now to facilitate that.
I don't think there's a board member one that doesn't want our community, our school buildings used by our communities, because they're the taxpayers, and they're the ones who put these buildings here. But under our guidelines and our restraints, I agree. You know, who's going to be assuring, who's going to assure that 63 people will only be in that gym down there?
And that, to me, follows back upon the people that have been hired to handle the little league, you know, working under Mr. Norton like the executive. The two supervisors of the ballpark, they had to follow the whatever guidelines. And I think we'd have to, if we put any guidelines out there, we'd have to say, this is it. We found you breaking these guidelines, and we have to close it down.
So we'll do some research for you between that and Thursday, and give you all opportunity to think about what you'd like to do.
Okay.
And that's the agenda.
Okay, any other questions, comments? If not, we'll.
Over to you.
Say your flowers. Got it? That's Brother Jerry, just for you. All favor? Thank you all. Thank you for all the visitors on there. Thank you, Stacy.
I need you all to stay just for a moment.